We have all these new.
Somebody must have done soon.
We have all these new visuals now. All right. All right. Got it. Got that. All right. We call the June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting at Bethlehem Township Planning Board to Order. Seven thirty P M. This virtual meeting is called pursuant to provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, both adequate and electronic notice of this virtual meeting has been provided by way of publication in a hundred and Democrat and Curry news newspapers on January two thousand twenty-one. And edition notice of this meeting was posted on the door of the municipal building located at four oh five Mine Road. And any handicapped accessible entrance there too. Posted on the municipal website, provided to the municipal clerk and distributed to all persons, if any requested copies of the same. This meeting is being recorded with both audio and video and may be rebroadcast. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Roll call, please.
Sir Baumgarten?
I'm here.
Jennifer Seabird?
Yes.
Art Randolph?
Here.
Ken Shalay?
Here.
Ace Dan Kelly? Phil Bellin? Robert Traminski?
Here.
Jose Reyes?
Here.
Brad Nelson?
Here.
Ryan Messinger?
Here.
Steve Di Lorenzo?
Here.
Judy Nat? Suzanne Meyer? Kara Kuzinski?
Here.
Okay. All right, so we have a couple of discussions tonight.
Are we going to do the pledge?
Yes, let's do the pledge. Art?
You have it.
United States of America. And to the Republic of Wicked Stan. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
One thing that I will like when we get back to in person is having a pledge of allegiance where it's in unison. Not so broken up. So you've just arrived. If, Mary, did you notice that?
I'm sorry?
I said Steve Di Lorenzo arrived. All right. All right, so we have the proposed cannabis business ordinance discussion. So. Can you give us a, Mr. Mayor, can you give us a rundown of what the township committee is doing on this?
Well, we've introduced the ordinance to opt out. Because opting out appears to give us more options than allowing us to go in, which ties us in for five years. If we just slide in by doing nothing. We can opt in anytime in the future. We're trying to educate the public, or at least not educate them, but offer them as much information as we can. We've got a survey going. Lou has on the website to try to. Is that Jose's?
Yes, it is.
That was a good.
Yeah, yeah, I just finished dinner. Excuse me.
Well, can I, can I ask you, um, did this, uh, did the the template for this ordinance originate within the township, or was it forwarded to the township?
Well, it came from our attorney. I'm not sure where he got it from.
And what firm does he work for?
Himself, Benbrook and Benbrook.
Okay.
It's basically to opt out of the, the, the five or six, the sixth, I, I still have questions about the sixth, which is delivery because delivery can be done. Kara, you could probably, uh, fill us in on delivery. I mean, we're not going to be stopping UPS from delivering bags to, uh, to people who order them through the online processor through the mail. But, uh, the, the other, um, forums are growing, manufacturing, distributing and retailing amongst others. But, uh.
With all due respect, it, it appears to me that the only beneficiary of this ordinance is online delivery organizations and I, I, I wonder, so those are like DoorDash, Amazon.
Could be.
Are very wealthy individuals that have a lot of ability to influence things. So I noted that the only carve out in this, in, in this legislation was, um, for online great organizations, businesses.
And that, that was done by whoever, I believe this comes from the state. I don't know if Kara can fill me in on this. I have not.
Please illuminate us.
Uh, yeah, excuse me here.
Yeah, I don't know where this originated or where it came from. Um, I will say that a lot of municipalities are adopting the, the states. I guess general form, I will say, if that's where, where this one particular one came from.
That's where I told you came from, yeah.
Okay, and I, I, I would think that, just thinking of it from a practical standpoint, um, enforcement of the delivery aspect is probably the most difficult at the end of the day. Um, that might be why some municipalities or even the legislation itself, um, you know, carves that out. Um, and, you know, again, without knowing where it came from, I can't say much more, but that's, but the way that the mayor described is exactly what this does.
So I guess I have a, just a, a general comment. Bethlehem Township, you know, it, it, it's roots are as a farming community. And that, um, the decision of what, when and what type of legal crops to plant, I think belongs to the businessman, the farmer in this case. So specifically, this legislation fringes, it's a, the municipality by adopting this legislation infringes upon that private decision.
Oh.
And my second point is.
Oh, hold on.
What, excuse me?
Hold on one second because I want to address that first point of yours. Um, because this is master plan inconsistency. And I guess what my question is, is, is exactly kind of what Jennifer just said, is our master plan supports farming. And at least on the first line item of the legislation, it is farming. So can we actually legally say that this is not inconsistent with our master plan when our master plan is supporting the farmer? As Jennifer said, it is illegal. It's a legal crop and it is a crop. Um, now where it happens and greenhouses and everything else, that's, that's a separate component. My concern is, you know, it is a all too often, we always go for master plan consistency. And, and I don't think a lot of people have read our master plan or understand the master plan. But a big part of that master plan is fostering farming. And so I think that's a difficult leap to make, you know, for us to outlaw everything, just as Jennifer said, at least on, on that first item, with being consistent with our master plan and supporting an ordinance that goes against a legal crop.
I have a question for Walter. Um, had the adoption or rejection of the ordinance that will take place after the public hearing on July first?
It will take place after the public hearing. I'm going to be out of the country celebrating my return of my life being given back to me. And I won't be at the first July meeting. I'm going to, uh, see if, if we can put that off till the second meeting in July, the, the vote, but we could certainly, if, if we have, if we're able to do that, I can, um, or, or we can, we can certainly use the, the first meeting in July as an informational session. One of the problems I have that nobody else, unless you've been on the committee, you don't really care about, you probably don't really know about, is that, um, enforcement in, in almost anything, any ordinance in this, in this township is non-existent. I've got four different animal problems that no one will deal with. The state police won't deal with it. They report to Trenton, not to Mine Road. Um, Trenton doesn't want them dealing with a lot of things. It's not the individual troopers. Trenton calls the shots and we have a different form of police for, force that we would have if, if we had, um, you know, municipal police, and I'm not advocating that. That's extremely expensive. We don't really need that, at least in my opinion. However, there's no enforcement and I believe one of my concerns, I've been to many different symposiums and uh, information sessions by the prosecutors and all sorts of law enforcement is that enforcement's a problem and um, if you have retail stores, there's going to be people hanging around retail stores. We've already seen, I think Art Randolph can tell you, he's already pulling people off of guardrails that are affected. Um, the enforcement issue is the issue that I, that, that, that I see as the biggest problem, uh, in, in this, in this legalization process. And if we, um, you know, if we do have people growing it, what's township committee going to do when they say, ha, these, I, I'm having problems, people are breaking into, you know, it's your fault, whatever, whatever the problems are, I can see many of them. And we're just going to say, well, there's nothing we can do. We, our government tends to say that a lot. There's nothing we can do. And, uh, the planning board isn't the government that's going to have to deal with these problems.
Well, I have a follow, I will have a follow, I have a follow-up question, if I may.
Sure. Ken, your meeting online.
Go on, Bob.
The, the final decision to enact the ordinance is not up to the citizens regardless of how the, the public meetings go is, or is it strictly up to the committee to either adopt or reject the ordinance?
Ken, if I can maybe just give a little recap as to where we are here. So the governing body introduced this ordinance in its current form at first reading. Every ordinance that affects the land use aspect or zoning aspect of the municipality has to come to the planning board for a determination as to whether it's substantially consistent with your master plan. Now, I know a lot of you know this and I'm just going step by step. So you could do what we do a number of times and make a motion and a vote that yes, it is substantially consistent. It goes back to the governing body. The governing body has its public hearing and they decide what to do. Your other options are to make a finding that it's not substantially consistent for X, Y, Z reasons, which as I'm hearing tonight could very well be for the farming reasons. And also to make recommendations to the governing body as to how you think the ordinance could be improved. That is that again, put to a vote, put in writing, and that goes back to the governing body. When the governing body has its public hearing, ultimately it's up to the governing body as to whether, whatever that vote is based upon the planning board's finding, based upon the planning board's recommendation and based upon the public hearing. A governing body is allowed to adopt an ordinance that is not substantially consistent with the master plan, provided that it makes findings on the record as to why it's doing it. So that's, that's the overall process. So there could definitely be input. There could definitely be findings. Um, the governing body has to do things the proper way in order to adopt something that may not be consistent. Um, but that's the mechanism. So just to kind of put broad brush over everything.
Thank you, Kara. That's really helpful.
You're welcome.
Okay, so with, with, with that explanation, I mean, if we are.
Jose, you're muted. I'm sorry. Jose's talking. He's muted.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Uh, I still like to address what Ken said as far as our it's inconsistent in a sense that we are encouraging farming. And this prevents a farmer from growing a crop.
And, and, and that's what I wanted to ask Art. It could be Art or Walt because you're both in this conversation naturally. Um, has, has that component been addressed at any of your discussions? Or not, or not yet. It, it doesn't, there's not necessarily a right and wrong answer.
We simply introduced it. Judy Nelson was, was putting together information. I don't know where that stands or, uh, they, they had some kind of a Judy and Paul went to, to some informational session or a dinner or something. I have not really heard much out of that. Um, that is where we were expecting to see the input into, to our committee, but the public hearing um, was where all this was supposed to be hashed out.
Okay, okay.
Just, just since, since you mentioned Judy, I just want a note from Mary. Judy showed up probably about, uh, seven forty-five or so.
Yes, I saw. Thanks. Um, can you identify what informational sent session you attended?
No, the other Judy, Judy Nelson, not Judy Nat.
Okay.
I, I, um, I've watched a couple of, there, there's a young people for Hundred and County that, that was pleading, pleading not to, to introduce this, not, not to allow these uses. I spent, uh, two or three hours at the prosecutor, uh, when it was, uh, Anthony Kearns had a, um, a joint session with a federal agent out in Colorado who had been tasked to study the effects of legalization in Colorado, um, along with a whole bunch of people in Central, in Hundred and Central, uh, high school in their auditorium. I've met with, uh, law enforcement people in Clinton. I spent six weeks with the Clinton Township Police talking about the fact that they pretty much don't do any policing anymore. Uh, it's on the highways because all they're doing is drug trafficking. Um, yes, I've.
And what drug is that? Is that heroin?
Well, it's all of them actually. Uh, heroin and fentanyl are the biggest problems because they tend to be fatal. Um, especially with the introduction of fentanyl. Um, however, I, I happen to know somebody who works in an animal, uh, uh, hospital who's seeing more and more animals overdosed from, um, eating bags of gummies, uh, which you can overdose on apparently. Um, so there are a lot of ancillary issues that just saying, okay, it's okay to do now does not address.
Okay.
And that's why we were asking for more time.
Uh, one, one.
Let me ask this question.
To ask is, has there been any explanation on the, um, on the economic cost to the township by in, in implementing this prohibition in that, you know, you've, and the, the ordinance um, outlaws, you know, five classes of license. Has there been any kind of study was saying like, well, if we had one license of class one or one license of class two, one, class three, what would be the economic impact of that on them revenue? And, and, you know, that gets to sort of the fiscal responsibility of, um, you know, commerce in the, in the, in the.
These are the kind of things that should be done before we, we decide we want to get into it. And that's why opting out allows us to get back in, in September or October or June. You know, uh, opting out gives us the option to go in once we know what we're dealing with because we don't now.
Why not study it before introducing laws which limit?
Because if we don't introduce an opt-out, we are automatically tied into it for five years.
And, and the ordinance has to be adopted by August twenty-second. Actually, there's a question, is it the eighteenth, the twentieth, the twenty-second? But if, if it, yeah, so if it's not done by then, um, then you're automatically in this five-year time period and you're stuck. Now, understand, and I think the mayor's saying, and you know, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Art or, or Walter, but if this ordinance gets adopted as is or as revised, nothing stops the borough or the, you know, the governing body or anyone from going back and revisiting and doing studies and taking a look at it again and making changes. The only thing that will stop you is if you don't do anything by the deadline.
Well, I think what you're doing here is, it's a way of circumventing the.
I want every able to ask questions. We'll come back. We'll come back.
Okay.
Well, that was, that was going to be my question because my understanding of it was if you do nothing, you are stuck in there for five years and there's nothing that you can do. By opting out, it gives you the ability to figure things out, figure how it affects your town and correct me if I'm wrong, Art or Walt or Kara, that at any time you can say as the governing body, okay, yes, we'll give a license one. Or we'll give a license three at any time after you opt out, you could say, we'll let a license one come in, which is the farming piece of it. But we're not, you know, is, is that correct? Is that the way I understand it?
Is that correct? If you outlaw something that then you can allow exemptions?
It, it's no different than any other ordinance at that point. So if we had a non-permitted use in one zone, we could go back, we can make changes going through the proper procedure, of course. But it, it doesn't change any of that. And the only other thing I want to note is that the, uh, county agricultural development board and the state agricultural development board have not yet recognized um, recreational cannabis as a agricultural use. And the only reason why I'm bringing that up is because in farming towns such as yours, um, those S A D C and C A D B regulations will allow farming what's considered to be farming agricultural uses anywhere in the municipality. So um, medicinal cannabis was deemed to be an agricultural use and that could be farmed anywhere. They have not yet extended it to recreational use. For whatever reason, I don't know and understand the difference. Um, they're both legal now, so it, I, I, I wish I was on one of those boards so I could really understand the, the mindset, but I just bring that up again because that has a zoning aspect of what's done in a lot of these municipalities where you have a lot of these agricultural areas and uses.
Kara, would it be correct to say that the legislative process in New Jersey, New Jersey has been very deliberative and that these licensing classes and the way that these, the, these classes are classified and the, um, regulation of that commerce has been very deliberated at a, um, state level and that the states actually have a right to regulate interstate commerce. And I note that the real weakness in this very short law is, is it's that this is actually noted in the severability clause that's in that if you open it up and you look there and it says, hey, you know, if we lose on one of these things, the rest of them are still there. So essentially, you know, the winners of this legislation, you know, the internet delivery companies, you know, they'll, they're going to take what they can get. And, and the shifting of this burden is going to be on the municipalities to defend this prohibition on these class licenses, one by one by one. And so I, I guess my point is that I would ask the township to very carefully um, look at the reasonableness of what they're proposing. And that a total ban on all the classes without any study, without any evaluation of what each class represents. You know, there's a big difference between zero licenses and one licenses. And, um, and I think you need, I think this type of legislation or ordinances needs to be very carefully considered and that the timeline for adoption by the municipality should, um, reflect the seriousness of outlawing behavior essentially.
And, and again, not just trying to bring full circle what the planning board's role here is. The planning board's role is to determine consistency. Um, the public hearing, everyone here and, and anyone else has the ability to go and argue the merits of the ordinance itself. But the planning board's, you know, sole role, role here is consistency and recommendations. So what you're saying, Jen, most certainly can be a recommendation, um, as well as anything else that anyone may, may want to bring to the table. Um, but the, the findings are consistency related.
Is there any other crop that the Bethlehem Township municipality prohibits?
Can you answer that?
I, I have no idea. And again, that's, that's part of the reason why I bring up the agricultural development boards, county and state. Um, because they also have a role in that.
Is marijuana still a federal, uh, outlaw substance?
Uh, the federal government has not. Yeah, they, they have not, uh, they've left it up to the state, but as far as federally, it's, uh, is not permitted.
I know some FBI agents that like to have fun with that sometimes, but, uh, uh, how come nobody seems to really wonder how this can exist at the same time?
Because of states' rights. States have the right to regulate and.
I, I thought we settled that in eighteen sixty-five.
Yeah, it's well, very well established.
Uh, the states' rights.
Civil liberties.
Brad, you got a call?
Yeah, just, um, the mayor had referenced, um, Judy and, and Paul Muir going to a presentation that was done by the New Jer, that, New Jersey State League of Municipalities. And that presentation is available on the Bethlehem web, Bethlehem Township website under Cannabis Resources. Um, so that's what, that's what the mayor was referring to.
Thank you, Brad.
Um, my, you're welcome. My opinion on this is, um, I, I don't think it's as simple as saying a farmer can't grow the crop. My understanding is these crops are grown indoors um, in a warehouse type setting. Um, so to me, I have serious concerns about water usage, right? They're not going to be rained on. They're going to be in a climate controlled area. We all work off of wells. This isn't like growing corn in a field. That's not how it's done. So is the farmer now going to be sucking fifty thousand gallons of water a day to water these plants? I don't know. Um, you know, businesses, I personally agree, we should, the town should, you know, opt out right now until we do all that research. I think opting in, although it is probably not consistent with our farming, I think opens us up to having a situation where wells run dry, you know, whatever, people hanging out in front of storefronts and causing problems. And now you, now you're stuck for five years, right? Now there's no way to fix it. Um, so I, I'm, I support opting out. And, but then, as Jennifer says, we need to do the research and find out. I don't know how much water a pot plant consumes in a day. Um, you know, but it's indoors, you know, uh, look, I read through briefly the, um, the presentation, not word for word, that, that's up on the website. You know, I think the state is going to have to define what security is needed, things like that, and we don't know those details. So to allow someone to start doing something based on regulations the state hasn't even finalized yet, to me is foolish. And I think we should opt out and wait until everything is finalized. So we know what we're dealing with. Then we can opt back in. Um, I do have questions about if you opt in, is it the town that gets to decide how many licenses of each class? Can we opt in for one class and not others? Can we say, okay, we want one, you know, class one license, or do we just have to accept all class one applications, things like that? I don't think has, anyone here knows the answer to. Um, so again, I just think opting in, uh, potentially causes far more harm than opting out for a period of time, but I do think we need to push to have all that researched on and presented to the public so that we can then make a more educated opt-in decision. That's it.
One, Jose?
Yeah, I, again, my, uh, my main concern with this is the number one, farming. And we're here to determine if it's consistent or inconsistent with the master plan. And the master plan says we're encouraging farming. That's the main, that's what my main issue with this. You know, if we do it in this one, are we going to do it in others? Are we going to change the master plan to say you could grow any crops but A, B, C? It, there's not a consistency here.
Well, I, Jose, I'd, I'd maybe question that I, I, I don't know exactly how the master plan is worded, but again, I think it's important to designate or, or to understand that this stuff is grown in a warehouse and needs to be watered, not by mother nature, right? So does our master plan, when it talks about farming, everyone thinks you're planting something in the ground and it gets rained on and it grows. Um, this is not that case. This is more of a cultivation uh, than, than farming arguably, right? So I'm not saying it is or isn't, but I think that's a, you know, significant difference that this is grown in a, in a warehouse basically and not just planted in the ground and rained on.
You know, I think that those metrics are actually probably known, you know, that, you know, plants planted in the ground get irrigated and that this warehousing, you know, indoor farming is for lettuce and strawberries and blueberries. So I think that actually if there was, um, an attempt to, you know, try to look for data on what the impact is of these types of things, and maybe we could establish some sort of generic thing about water uses or something, you know, but, you know, that, that data is not unknown. It's not something that can't be.
Oh, I, I agree. We just don't know what it is right now as we sit here today and I don't.
And I don't know if we're gonna know everything by the August cutoff date or whatever that date is to opt out. So that's why I'm in favor of opting out, give us time to find out all that stuff. Um and, you know, it's up to the town to, you know, push the committee to, you know, find out all that information and and present it to us.
I guess my implication, I mean, I I agree with you um and what you're proposing about looking for the information. I just worry about enacting laws which prohibit commerce and 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 are adverse in to the, you know, to the business. I mean, essentially, you're implementing a prohibition and then saying, hey, later on, we'll look and see if we don't really wanna prohibit these things versus carefully thinking out ahead of time what prohibitions you wanna put in place. So I guess my leaning would be to say, let's think about it first and do something thoughtful that we can defend. You know, um.
Yep, Ryan.
So I I agree, Jennifer, that that makes a lot of sense. And I think most people, if you ask them on this board, they would prefer to have the information in hand before coming to some sort of final conclusion. And I'm sure the Township Committee feels very much the same way as well, before committing to something you wanna have as much input and and knowledge upfront. The the challenge here is obviously the the timeline that's been imposed on this. And so we're kind of pigeonholed into making a short-term decision. And I think that's really the challenge here. And and again, the Township Committee has done a really good job in their meetings of explaining, you know, why you need to opt out to give you the opportunity to opt back back in. It's the maximum flexibility of this whole process. And again, from from a messaging perspective, it's challenging to say that we want to prohibit any of this activity because we don't necessarily wanna sound like we're we're not interested in this, or we don't see that there's a a financial benefit here, an economic benefit that we wanna take advantage of at some point. But this is the reality of this particular decision at this particular time, and that's really where the focus is.
Can we understand that deadline a little bit more? Um is that a legislated deadline? Is that a legal? Is is there a law that we can point to that says by this date, if you don't take this action? You know, or is it just being represented as a big rush, you know?
Oh, it's actually right directly in the legislation that was voted on, the bill that permits uh recreational cannabis.
And and so so is, so there's a uh, I'll look that up then.
It's right from the governor's office, yes.
Yeah, uh my, uh is there any way we can ensure, and that's a strong word, that if we go through with this, that a follow-up studies will be held? And it's just now there's through uh the planning board, nothing will be done about it to try to review and see if we come up with something better or more consistent with the planning or master plan in the future. I just, the whole idea that this just may disappear once it's voted on.
Well, again, it's it's kind kind of how Kara explained it, you know, the, again, Township Committee doesn't need our blessing per se. They 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 can still override. But I mean, we can still bring up these concerns, and I mean, two of the members are here. Um, and um they hear it and and I think they would, they they would be willing to look at what we're looking at and see. Um, again, there's a lot of, there are, there's a lot of moving parts here and and, you know, I I you know, my my feeling is I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna um limit any any farming, any farmer's right or ability to 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 grow something in a town that we pride ourselves with farming. Now, that being said, what Brad was saying about there, you know, it's all warehousing, well, warehousing is also something that this town does not want. You know, we don't want big warehouses. Um we don't want our neighbors to have big warehouses. We don't want that. Um, so we're almost two different, the same topic on two different fronts. Um and then taking what Jennifer said is, I think we really do, there's a lot of of things that we could look at. And, you know, will it be brought up in the future? I mean, that that's up to individual townspeople. That's up to farmers. I mean, that's up to the plan, you know, I mean, we as a planning board can also bring that into further discussion and send it up to the Township Committee and at least force the, force them to discuss it. Um, that's about the best that we can do. Um but, you know, whether I like the law or not, whether I voted for the law or not, um we are a farming community and this is a, this is a crop and and when, you know, when we're saying that we're allowing medicinal, you know, as a crop, but we're not allowing it for recreational, that's that's a tomato kind of comment. Um in time, I think that's gonna change. Um so we need to, you know, we kind of have to, whether we, you know, there there are, there are some people out there that don't, they don't like the smell of farms, you know, and then what we'll all say is, well, then don't move to Bethlehem Township. And and so, you know, we 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 do, my, you know, my gut feeling is we do, we still need to support those farms, understanding that this might not be, you know, marijuana grant, you know, that's that's planted in a field like corn, like Brad said, that is, you know, watered with rain. There are, you know, implications of 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 land use, whether we're using it for warehousing, whether we're using the water usage. I mean, water usage was a major concern. That was a concern with the concrete plant. So again, we have to be mindful of consistency in any discussions that we have. So if this is indeed that situation where they're using a lot of water, well, we need to a- address that like any other application that we've that we've done in the past. So and it 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 is gonna take time and being that there is a self-impose or a a state imposed deadline, I think that's something that that to sit here and rush something, and if we don't opt in and it's a five-year stint where we, you know, we can't make, well, that could be a problem too. So I I I I can see both sides of it for sure. Um is there anybody else on the board? I do wanna get some public comment on this also.
Ken, this is Judy Nat. Um you mentioned the state deadline. When is that?
August twenty-second is the most consistent date that I've seen. I'm just trying to find the exact bill right now so I can direct everybody to it. No, we don't.
Right, and Judy, it is statewide. Every town has to make this decision.
Okay.
Why we're making it at the last minute? If this was passed in legislation for months and months and months, why is this putting put before us now?
Their feet a long time with getting things moving from from after it was voted on to to the governor signing something. That wasn't our doing. And then there's been a lot of discussion, understandably. It it it's 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 a very important, you know, law and it affects a lot of people, both sides. So.
If you knew the amount of work that has to be done by a Township Committee, uh you you wouldn't be asking last minute. It's not last minute budgets. There there are so many issues that have be done in the same, in in a timeframe. And um the, I I don't even wanna go there. There's a lot to do. You don't just show up every two weeks and talk.
To clarify, to clarify, the governor signed the law on February twenty-second. And the provision is that a municipal stip- it stipulates that a municipal regulation or prohibition must be adopted within one hundred and eighty days of the effective date of the act. And that's why August twenty-second is that date, that that's the six months.
That's, and I think where some of the confusion is, is a hun- it's it's described in terms of number of days. So February only had twenty-eight or twenty-nine days, I forget if it was leap year or not. So it's not exactly six months from the twenty-second. It's actually a hundred and eighty days. So some people are throwing out their August twenty-second, but in actuality, I think if you count the hundred and eighty days, it's less than that.
Ken, if I may.
Yeah.
Okay, um so in my police career, two things that came up as just parallels as to something brand new being introduced to the state, but it would affect the municipalities, were when the breathalyzer was revised to a much more modern device. And also when tasers were introduced as a potentially less lethal form of force in between going to hands, verbal, or actual deadly force. And in that process, it was very clear that the state expected towns to eventually adopt these devices as part of the law enforcement tools. After they had gone through a massive court review based on test cases that came up from in the field through the bigger agencies, namely the state police. I find it interesting that the opt-out component came with a deadline and no deadline on the back end mandating that we opt in, simply that we can at any time. Whereas it says if we take no action, then we're locked into this without any recourse for the next five years. My suspicion is they did that on purpose to tell us in a very nice way that we don't wanna be a test case. This is gonna have to go through the courts. There may be federal review, federal things that come down that are beyond our our awareness. The state also is going to have to look at how the laws are ultimately applied and revised before they take a final form that's actually workable for a municipal municipality like us. So while I'm very pro-farmer, I am very much in favor of, almost adamant about opting out because they give us a window to come in at any time when this makes sense and we can do our due diligence, see how it's gonna affect the community, see what the community actually wants, whether it's uh people that can make a living off of this, or the people that may have to live next to, or the people that decide to to access whatever is available. So while on the surface, I understand what Jennifer is saying, Ken, that we're prohibiting something, but considering that this is brand new and it needs a shakedown period, which I'm sure it's gonna come through, it makes it very viable for us by opting out to watch what's going on, do our due diligence, formulate what ordinances, rules, where in the town, if the master plan has to be reviewed, what's involved, all the the issues that were brought up here that are all valid. And then when it makes sense to opt in, if that's what the community wants, at that time, we have the information from all the different sources, uh community-based, public, private, law enforcement, legal, other states, whatever, whatever resources we want. So I believe the state was very nice in saying, without saying, you wanna opt out, let us go through the process, get this refined to where it's workable. So when you do implement it, it'll be successful in in whatever your community decides it wants, whether it's a piece of this, none of it, uh specific areas, however it shakes out. There shouldn't be a rush to jump on board without it having been shaken down. And I think that's why they were so clear about the make a choice and you're stuck with uh being in it for five years with no recourse if you take no action. They wanted us with this choice to not sit on it, sit on our hands and drag our feet. They wanted us to to make a decision.
So why carve out um internet delivery services? I think if 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 the idea is that, hey, we're gonna opt out because that gives us, keeps our options open, then opt out entirely. I mean, the legislation is dealing with class one through five licensing. And uh essentially, the legislation says, hey, we're not gonna issue those licenses. Um, you know, being silent on allowing only one type of service to, only one type of business, which is based on the internet and the tax revenue collection can be difficult for some of those companies. Let's, let's take that out.
I was told that we couldn't do that. I don't know if that's true or not, and that'll need to be asked again uh at at the next meeting. I was told that you can't, we can't stop deliveries because we don't have uh authority over that. Um, I don't know. I don't know if that's true or not. If it's, if if we can, then then need to include it. But I I know that that this country is getting to a point where if if you can make money doing anything, then it's good. Because the only thing that matters is you're making money. There is no morality. Uh if it's somebody else's problem, let the cops or the E M Ts deal with it. Let the government deal with it. All I know is I want what I want. If it makes money, I'll take it. If we're at that point in time, then I probably have to find someplace else to go uh in this world because that's uh, that's a little scary to me.
These problems have been in our society for decades. So.
And the planning board's not gonna solve.
Be thoughtful and um I would like to understand why the internet delivery companies are excluded from this legislation. If if it's, if it's because we can't issue licenses and we were gonna say, hey, we wanna keep our options open with whether we're gonna issue these class one through five licenses, um and just be silent. Just don't mention that delivery can happen. If it's legal, if delivery can be legal, then why mention it specifically as an exclusion to the law?
Or how are you, how are you gonna, uh, how are you gonna uh control, a box comes to a a cons- a person in town, it says A B C Delivery Company and it's got marijuana? How are we going to establish a drug sniffing dog squad to to do to 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 deal with the post office, UPS, Federal Express? Uh how how could a municipality like Bethlehem possibly even attempt to to regulate a delivery service? I I I think that's ridiculous.
I totally agree with you. I totally agree with you. But this, as it's written, creates one winner. And that winner is an internet delivery service. It's a door.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Why do you object to that? I I I'd like to know your.
So, so wait a minute, Bob, 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 it doesn't matter. Hold on, can I? According to the presentation, it's on the website, the state is not allowing towns to prohibit class six licenses. So we cannot opt out of class six. So that's why the ordinance says, except for delivery. We can opt out of one through five. We can't opt out of six.
Okay.
I don't know why that is, but that's what the state.
Probably because trying to regulate it or stop it, like Walter said, is close to impossible unless you unless you put up a roadblock on on every.
It's not, it it's not Bethlehem Township saying you can't do it. It's the state saying we can't prohibit it.
So let's, let's be silent on it. Let's adopt um one through five and be silent on number six. And then if we're silent on number six, then it defaults to the state law.
There's a compromise I can live with.
But where where does it say we're we're not outlawing six, right?
It's in there.
We're specifically excluding it.
Yeah, there's an exclusion.
Well, it's it's part of the state law and and states supersedes us. So unfortunately, I mean, if you look at something like Jennifer said, exclude that at the vote. Okay, that's that's simple. Well, as far as the Township Committee goes, but move on. Um I haven't heard from Phil. Phil, are you on?
I'm here. Yeah, well, I don't think there's a, I don't think there's a farmer in town that would grow it. Um, you'd have to put guardhouses. You know, it, somebody would find out about it. You'd have people coming from all over the place trying to steal it. That's why they're growing it in warehouses. Besides that, in the warehouse, they have better control over the water, the lighting. Uh, we belong to the uh International Plant Propagators Society, but we're not allowed to get much information from the people that grow the cannabis, but some leaks by, but they've done more studies on lighting and water than anybody. And uh really, the plant doesn't need as much as you think. So, but it would be, it would be dangerous for a farmer to grow it. Now, if you wanna grow it just for the oil, I guess it's a different plant. There's people doing that. I could understand that. And if somebody smokes it, they're not gonna get as much out of it. But uh, yeah, you know, I wouldn't do it. I'd have to have guardhouses all over the place because people find out. You know, it would be dangerous, I think. But uh for a farmer wanting to grow it for oil, I think they should be allowed to do that. That's all I got.
All right, all right. Let's just get some, some public comment, if if there is any. So I need a motion to open to the public.
I'm sorry, I had no idea who said that.
Made the motion?
Second.
Make a motion open to the public.
Bob and Art. All those in favor?
Hi.
All right. Anybody have any comments on public that's on about this topic?
And, hi Ken, this is Teresa Conover. Sorry.
There you go.
I just had a quick question. Um, it was probably what Phil was talking about. Um, this ordinance doesn't apply to growing hemp, right? Like, that's not the same legislation. Okay. I see Kara saying no. Okay. I was just curious.
Ken, I had a question. Um.
Hold on, just.
Do we know what adjacent towns are doing?
Hold on, hold on. Who is speaking? But hold on, because we're open to pub, we're public comment right now. There's no other public?
Sorry.
No, that's okay. Motion to close to the public?
Motion to close.
Second.
Bob, second, Walter and Bob, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Against abstentions? Okay, Judy?
I was just curious if we know what other towns are doing, like adjacent towns or even as far as Flemington.
I've been told that Hampton was opting out. I don't know.
How about Bloomsbury?
Honestly, I think a lot of the towns in the general area, and you know, I represent towns even up north that are more focused on retail aspect. They're just all getting this underway. And I think a lot of it is because there was a lot of questions because this time period, this hundred and eighty days started from the commission's rules and recommendations. And they took a while to come out and there is a lot of, of thought process that needs to happen. So, uh, all of my boards at this point are just getting the direction from the governing body. So they're just getting to this point. There are towns in the general vicinity that are allowing all of them, allowing some of them, allowing, uh, allowing them with conditions and imposing the conditions because what the legislation did was allow them, said that they could be allowed as conditional uses, but didn't specify what the conditions would be, um, and limiting the number. So I mean, it runs the gamut, really. Um, and a lot of it depends, like you said, on, on what type of a municipality you're dealing with. Some are going to lend themselves more to growing and some are going to let themselves more to, you know, retail. Um, I'll say that I've been contacted by a couple of private clients that have been looking into this even before the legislation came out. And, and what I'm hearing is it is a very expensive endeavor because it's on a greenhouse, it's on an industrial area. You know, not, not going either way as to whether it should be allowed or not, but just something, you know, that, that is extremely costly for the security reasons and, and just for the success rate. And that's, that's all I can kind of shed.
Yeah, I had heard there was some, um, subsidizing proposed at the state level for BIPOC farmers, retailers.
You're way ahead of me, Judy.
All right. All right. Um, and any other discussion on?
Well, I'll put my two cents in. Um, we have had, it's pretty obvious that there's, there's just a lot of unknowns here. Uh, as to how this is going to work. I think, I think some of the, uh, aspects brought out about the farming and the water use. The other thing too is Brad points out that it's grown indoors. What, what kind of issues are we going to face down the road if someone wants to erect a structure to do that? And now we get into, I, I know we, we, they have to go through the procedure, but, um, are we going to allow it only in a highway commercial zone? Are we going to let somebody set it up in a, in a mountain residential or somewhere else? I, I, I know they'd have to come before the board and go through the procedure, but, um, and, and I'm not so sure that growing something inside i- is considered, uh, farming. Now, having said all of that, I think just in general, for us to do a, as a township, both the planning board and the committee, we need to perform due diligence. And I don't think that's been done yet. It's nobody's fault. Uh, I, I just think that the timeframe has been very compressed. And therefore I probably would prefer to opt out until this gets cleared up a little bit and then you know, discuss it down the road. But I, I, I think opting out, we have to do that to buy us a, as a township, some time to study this and make sure that issues that are being questioned now are addressed and that there is no confusion. And we're not stuck with something for five years. As I said, if only we had known that before, we would have never done it. So I would be in favor of opting out until we have more information and decide what the township wants to do.
Okay. All right. So, so basically, um, the, the attachment committee's got the choice to do the vote on opting in, opting out and passing this. You know, our, our sole, you know, opponent here is just master plan consistency. So that is, that is all we are actually voting on, on whether this is consistent or not consistent with our master plan. So.
And, and recommendations, Ken, if there are certain, you know, I, I, I think everybody hears what they may be, but if the board collectively wants to make any formal recommendations to the governing body, they could do that as well.
So again, you know, moving, we, we can say that it is, you know, that it is inconsistent with our master plan. And the reasons why we're doing it. And one of those is further study and further details of where the grow operations can happen. That's absolutely a part of it. My, my concern from this board is overall consistency in every decision we make. And I, 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 I can't wrap my brain around us being consistent on our master plan about a, about a crop, whether or not I agree with it or not, whether or not a farmer is able to make that work. So I, I just, I want us to be consistent with all of our decisions that we've made over the years. And again, we can, we can by all means have further, further discussions and, um, have the township committee do or look into studies and all that. And I don't disagree with any of that. I've heard a lot of great, great comments here tonight. But my, my concern is consistency. And I don't know if, 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 if this would act justify, you know, justifiably, if push comes to shove, if somebody challenged us down the road with saying a, a, a crop.
Uh-oh. There he is.
We lost you.
Oh, so, so we're, we're not bringing up buildings and we're not bringing up water and we're not bringing that up right now. And that's all valid stuff that we need to work with. But as far as growing a crop, whether we agree that it's equal or not, I do support the right of a farmer to do that as what's in our master plan. If we don't like that, we can by all means change our master plan. I mean, we, we, we do have a 10 year, our, our timeframe's coming up very soon for us to revisit our master plan. And maybe that's, this might be the impetus for us to look at the master plan. Absolutely. But as it's, as it's right now, I, I don't think that we can find that this is, you know, that this is, you know, um, not inconsistent. So.
Should we form a committee? Is there a commit, an existing committee that can study this and look at the factors, the, you know, that might be involved in terms of the various zoning and what, you know, uniform
I mean.
Principles that might be applied?
And, and, and it's, it's definitely going to take some research time. And a lot of what Art said is the state's going to look at, at this coming down and cases that come out and court cases that might come out and problems that are coming out. And I think all of that is positive and negative feedback. And that's something that a subcommittee would definitely use. But based on our time, uh, you know, August, we just don't have the time right now without rushing it. And just going back to the first thing that you said, Jen, it's, it's a very important decision and we shouldn't be rushing it. But that being said, if it's something that we need to look at, we, we absolutely can look at it, you know, as, as a planning board. And like I said, our, our master plan is coming up for review and that would be the time for us to actually, you know, to maybe incorporate some of this into that. So, all right.
Let, let me make one point, Ken.
Yeah, go on, Phil.
Technically, if it's grown inside or outside, it's farming. If you put up holding houses, greenhouses, it's still farming. You're just changing an environment. So.
Absolutely.
If you're considering farming, then you could forget about the zoning and you could forget about the water. Putting limits on it because it is farming and you can't put limits on that because it's farming. So you're going to have to decide if you want it at all. I guess the state's given us a chance to not have it.
Yep.
You know, so, but, but once you let it in, it's farming. So you're not going to be able to zone it out. You're not going to be able to do any of that stuff.
Yep.
So Ken, can I throw something in there which I, which I just read? So in that resource, it's available on the, on the township website. Uh, the last page or one of the last pages has a link to frequently or, or, or cannabis page and New Jersey League of Municipality Cannabis Page. And I went to that and they have a, an FAQ section. And one of the questions is, will cannabis cultivators be eligible for farmland assessment? And the answer is the law specifically prohibits a cannabis cultivator from operating or being located on the land, on land that is valued, assessed or taxed as an agricultural or horticultural use pursuant to the Farmland Assessment Act of nineteen sixty-four. So I don't know what that means, but to me, that almost says you can't be on a farm.
It just means they want the taxes off of it.
Yeah, it just, yeah, it means you're, you don't qualify for farmland assessment of that property. And that's kind of in line.
Just of that half acre building, you mean, or just, or whatever that encompasses or?
We all sort it out by the big.
I don't have time. I'm having trouble.
Oh, that, that's fine.
Does that mean?
It's coming down.
Does that mean that?
It's the actual land it's, is what we're dealing with. But again, if, if a farmer chooses to and he's not protected, he could choose to pay rollback taxes and take that property off of farmland assessment and cultivate anything. I mean, it would, he would probably still have the farming protections, but he, he would be paying his full tax base on that land. And that's up to the farmer if that worked. So to Phil's point, Phil's probably right. You're right as far as the taxes. So, you know, the law doesn't want the, the towns to lose out on, on, on property taxes. And, and, or I should say have the farmer's benefit of farming soybean and corn and stuff that, that we've, that we're accustomed to. But they could opt to pay a full tax base and still farm.
Right. And it sounds to me then it's almost, I'm starting to think that it's almost more beneficial for someone, uh, well, here in Bethlehem, say like that, um, what's the warehouse right on one seventy-three, the fuel ox that just got kind of repainted and stuff. A building like that that already exists that isn't an actual farm, that might be a better location for someone to start a business, right? They're, they're already paying, paying full, you know, they're not assessed as a farm. Road in a building like that that already exists. But anyways, that's up to the farmer, I guess, too. So.
All right.
And then just, and then it's one other quick thing too. There's also a, an unknown as to whether, um, if you have preserved farmland, if you'll be allowed to grow on preserved farmland, if that was preserved with federal uh, dollars because it is a federally illegal substance. So that's another thing that I think the town would need to look into and understand. Which farms in our town receive federal monies to be considered preserved, if any.
So there, there's a lot of ins and outs here, absolutely. But bringing it back to just what we are doing tonight, let's just deem this, you know, you know, we need a motion to deem this ordinance not inconsistent with the master plan. That's where we got to go.
Yeah. So substantially the requirement is the planning board makes a finding as to whether it is substantially consistent with the master plan. So the motion would be whether it is or whether it isn't. If it is, it's fine. If it isn't, the reasons why, and then any recommendations.
Ken, I'm sorry, you, you got muted at one point where you were saying something and we, you, we didn't hear you.
Oh.
Earlier. You were saying, you know, why should be persistent or consistent? We lost that whole point.
Oh, I, I mean, basically it was off of Brad's, uh, property tax comment. And, and so that, that's where that was. It's if, again, if farming is, is what Phil had said was a farmer's right is a farmer's right. And then Brad had brought up the property tax farm redemption. And all, all I had said was that, that anybody with land that's farmland assessed can pay rollback taxes of three years and bring their land out of farmland preservation. I'm sure farmland, um, as far as taxes go. And, and, and go and, and, and plant what they want. And they'll still be protected as a farmer. They're just not getting the tax benefit of a farmland assessment on their property taxes. So, but there's, there's a lot of these avenues which isn't really our, our wheelhouse right now. We don't have to, you know, whether, whether you agree with it, that's, that's, that's going to be the hearing for the township committee. And I think there's a lot of valid reasons. So let's, let's, let's leave the township committee to do the township's business. Um, as Walter says all the time, and he's right, you know, let's, you know, let's, let, let's let those guys talk this out and decide. And if we can, we'll come up with a vote and, uh, come up with some recommendations and at least, and again, Art and, and Walter are part of it. So they, they already know the premise of, of all the board members here. But.
I, I really think, I mean, this is just launched on us just tonight, right? Like to come up with recommendations to understand whether it's consistent with the master plan. I haven't reviewed the master plan, you know, like, I mean, we should at least have two weeks, you know, to compose ourselves rather than rush this vote. That, I guess I, I submit that to you, that.
I hear you.
To table it to further discussion.
But from a standpoint of the township committee, they got to move forward. And all this is doing is it is granting the town time to make decisions. Ultimately, that's what it is. And, and no matter what we do here, the township committee can do what they choose anyway. All we can do is make our voices heard, absolutely. But we could table it and they could still bring it up for a vote and, and steamroll right over this board. It's, you know, we're not.
Let them do that then. Let them do that then.
Well, it, it's, they ask for a up or down vote and it's a discussion matter. And, and, I mean, we've, we've pretty well discussed it. Again, it's, it's, it is a farm. It's, it's, it's a, um, it's a farming component. As Phil said, whether it's inside of a building or outside of a building, it is a farm component. You know, that being said, I still, you know, I, it's a, it's a farming right. We are a farming community. I live in a farming community. And so I will support the farming community. And, and, and so, and again, you know, supporting this or not supporting this, all, all I'm, all my concern is, is, is we, we, we get master plan consistency reviews quite often. And a lot of times people don't read the master plan. They're not involved in the master plan. It, the master plan's a lot of pages. And, um, and it is going to be time. And I mean, Jose's done a lot of work over the years. I mean, since I've been on, on the board. You know, he, he did a lot of digging on it also. Um, it's a lot of pages, but, but.
Well, I would appreciate a presentation by Jose on what he sees as the major issues.
Well, again, it, it comes down to our support of farming, you know, uses in this town. That is a primary one. That's why we are, we are protecting farms all over the place. We want farming. And so this is a different kind. This is new, new, it's new to everybody, but we just got to at least move this forward. And if the township committee buys some time, you know, I think it's a wise decision on the township committee's point to, to vote the way they're, it, it appears they're going to vote, to buy us some time to get some research and make it, but for, for township. And it takes some time. That being said, we are just for consistency. And, you know, my feeling is that, that voting, uh, I, I don't find that this is consistent as it states right now with our master plan. But that's not going to.
I agree.
So, but, but again, we can, but we can also bring up some of the comments that will go to, to, uh, you know, to, to the township committee and they'll hear them. they'll hear them. So, all right.
So can this vote that we're gonna take is strictly a very narrow issue, which is strictly, is it consistent or not consistent with the master plan? That's all that's all we're doing, right?
Yes. Basically, keep in mind, everything around the town goes around our master plan. The master plan is is the law, quote unquote, of the town of what we want for land use. So we can make changes to that in time. And, you know, we can adjust that. But as as what we have in our master plan that was adopted, you know, that's what we're going off right now. This is our previously adopted master plan. And I don't know, Mary, if you happen to have the date of when we adopted that, twenty thirteen?
Adopted what?
Our master plan.
The original master plan or what what element are you speaking about?
I mean, the the last time that that we had revisited the master plan for.
You mean the reexamination report?
Probably twenty thirteen.
Reexamination report?
Yeah, our reexam.
Yeah, I believe there was one. Uh, I believe it was. I want to say two thousand thirteen, maybe fourteen, somewhere in there.
Yeah. Again, it's it's, I I think by statute, I I'm not, I'm hundred percent, I'm pretty sure it's every ten years we have to reexamine. Right, Cap? So. So again, this this puts us twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. So we're we're due for looking at the master plan. So going with, you know, exactly what you just said, Jen, we can, you know, we can look at the master plan and, you know, with this and work with everybody, work with the public to see what works for town. If this works for our town, great. If it doesn't work for our town, great. It's up to the, you know, the three thousand some odd people that live here to, uh, you know, to make that make that decision. So, all right. So with that, let's, I need a motion to deem. Um, or is there a number on this ordinance I have in front of me?
Ordinance four six eight point two oh two one.
That is not inconsistent with our master plan.
It no, no, so not. Let's let's make sure we do. So again, the term is substantially consistent. So the ordinance has to be substantially consistent with the master plan. So the the vote is to whether or not it's substantially consistent. So that's the vote.
A yes vote means, yes, I believe it's substantially consistent.
Correct.
Although it means I do not believe it's substantial.
That's correct. And and you could make the vote in the alternative that you, the motion could be that it is not substantially consistent with the master plan for these reasons. I just want to keep that substantially consistent language because that's that's the language.
So it sounds like if we do the latter, Kara, that if we make the motion that it's not substantially consistent, it's easier for us to then state the reasons why.
I I I would agree with that, but I I'm not on the board. So I I'm I'm not the motion maker.
Yep. Go on, Brad.
So well then, well then, Ken, before we make the motion, I mean, it sounds like, I mean, and we haven't voted on anything yet, but it sounds like we want, like, why are we thinking it's not substantially consistent because it is not promoting farming? Is that the only kind of comment we want to make?
Again, that that's that's our single biggest one. We are, we are a farming community. It is everywhere on our website. It is, everybody in this town knows that. We we and we see farm fields everywhere. To to agree or disagree with the crop that's planted, I think is a slippery slope. That is, you know, we might not like a crop, but it is a crop of of a sort unless we choose to change that, you know, in our master plan and 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 start adjusting these things. And it's not that we can't. But this is all, I just want us to be consistent in all of our determinations that we've made. That's all. So if you make the motion, we get the second, we can discuss what comments we want sent to the township committee.
Okay, that's what I was getting at.
That's fine. So Brad, you want to make the motion?
Sure. Um, I make a motion that ordinance four six eight dot two zero two one is not substantially consistent with Bethlehem Township's master plan.
Second.
Okay. Brad and then Jose? All right. So a affirmative vote, yes, will be in agreement with the farming field. And a no is you agree that um, that that's not a component of it. So it's it's exactly opposite that what we had just said with Kara and Jen that you had just asked.
So a yes vote means that it's not substantially consistent.
Yes, exactly. Correct. Oh.
But so do we want to have discussion before we vote or?
Oh, yeah. So let's.
Okay.
So if there's a feeling of 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 why we are saying not consistent. So. Go on, Jose.
I uh, I agree with you. I think this is a common committee. Our master plan states it all over the place. And this is outlawing something that's in the master plan.
Okay. Anything else we want to send up?
I have a quick question. Does the master plan? It's not, the master plan doesn't lay out allowable businesses, right? I mean, it it's that's within the ordinances itself, correct?
Yep. The master plan is the overall ten thousand foot view of where we want the town, different area. And we want things in, different things, um, that 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 are permitted certain areas, overall, where where we want development to happen and not happen.
Okay, because we have an ordinance that says you can't have a new a new car dealership, but that's the ordinance, not the master plan.
Yep. Yep.
Okay, all right.
I I guess I would like to evaluate the other classes and determine where, if anywhere, um, they would fit into our master plan. And that.
And that's why, that's why I just asked that question, Jennifer, right, is is whether the master plan lays out business types and 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 what I'm hearing is it does not um, other than where businesses can be located in terms of zoning.
Like, again, a good area to, you know, look further.
Mm-hmm.
Walter, are you trying to talk or no?
No, I am not.
Okay. Um.
So that's that. So that's not a reason for it to for for the finding that it's not substantially consistent. The farming certainly is, just the master plan provides farming. This particular ordinance does not allow for farming of that particular crop anywhere. Um, the other thing I'm hearing with regard to looking to see where else these classes could be consistent with the master plan, sounds like a recommendation to make.
Yeah, it could be. So basically, so sending it back to them with with the understanding that maybe there are areas that could be consistent. But I think that that further that would require further um, study, quite frankly. And um, that's that's good for a subcommittee, Jennifer, that that's exactly kind of what 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 we would need. Um, so there could be some big, you know, overall changes happening. Um, but again, this ultimately does give us time by by the township committee voting the way that I think they are going to vote. So, uh, any other, anything else and any other additions that we want to recommend, any recommendations? Okay.
Right. So before before we vote, just let me make sure, because I am going to put this in the form of a resolution um, that will be sent uh over a a letter that will be sent to council so that everybody's perfectly clear on what this is. So the the motion is that there is a finding that the proposed ordinance number four six eight dot two zero two one is not substantially consistent with the master plan due to the fact that it does not allow for farming of this particular crop anywhere within your municipality. In making the motion, the board is also making a recommendation that the uh governing body consider this and look to see where else other classes could be consistent with the master plan. Is that correct?
Sounds good. Yep. All right. Roll call vote, Mary?
Mayor Baumgarten?
I'm going to abstain.
Mr. Seabird?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
I'm staying.
Chairman Chalay?
Yes.
Mr. Ballin?
Yes.
Mr. Jiblinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
All right. All right. Um. Time is it? How are we doing? Nine o'clock. Um. All right, the um, the next thing up for business is the animal ordinance. Um, I I think that's going to be another in-depth conversation. Is everybody's feeling, you want to go further with this? I mean, we do have a ten o'clock. You can go till ten or we can put this off or um, table it until our next meeting. What is everybody's feeling?
Is there a draft ordinance? I didn't think there was a a draft or it's just a discussion at this point.
Right. Right now, it's right now, it's it's a discussion. We can discuss it for for fifteen minutes. Um, we can get some public input. Um, so the subcommittee did, they did meet. Um, and again, what what I want to say, you know, especially publicly here is, um, there is a lot of support for um, for um minimizing the animal ordinances, as Mayor said, um, we want to make things uh a little bit more animal friendly. Um, but that being said, there, I have talked to individuals um privately. And there are quite a few people that are apprehensive about many conditions of of having, for instance, chickens and roosters on smaller properties. And um, they're a little bit um nervous about about speaking up. And and, you know, all I want to say kind of is um, what whatever side you're on, whether you're a supporter or whether you're you're not a supporter, um, we we as a board, we need to hear from everybody. And, you know, if 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 eighty percent of individuals want an ordinance um that that is, you know, relaxing some of the rules that we have now and twenty percent of the people don't, um, I I I don't think, forget about those twenty percent. Um, we should still make it so that there's no hundred percent losers in in the town. I think every, because we all live here, we're all part of this town, we're all part of the fabric of this town. And you know, ultimately, I want everyone to to feel as though their voices were heard and and, you know, they get some piece of the pie. They might not get the whole pie, but I I I do want to make sure that everybody, you know, has has a a piece in this. All right. Um, so so with that, um, Walter had pretty much explained and and gone through at last meeting. Um, his feelings on it, um, what 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 they're looking at. Um, I think a a big thing is we have to decide on what what animals we absolutely want to limit, um, what what we want to allow, if it is chickens. Um, what we're going to allow as far as the roosters because of the noise, you know, impact of it. Um, we have some county resources that we can go off of. We have other town um, that we can kind of look at. I think overall, in in some of the time that we have now, let's let's get a a feeling of at least what individuals that are here tonight would like to see. And by the same token, from the same people that wanted, that want want everything, I I I do want to hear what they would limit. I think that that would give an honest opinion or a um, a sense of where they are.
And I I don't want to dominate this. I just have one comment. I think, um, you know, society, there's things that have changed in this whole trend towards having chickens as pets. And that's something, you know, we need to consider, plus the noise of the roosters. Um, what I'm wondering, and I really like to hear from some farmers on their views, is with the animals, the goats, you know, many, you know, many goats, many pigs, many cows, many horses, um, you know, uh, where would a farmer draw that line between a pet and the space needed, honestly, to give um, the animals a quality life? I I don't have an opinion one way or another, um, because I I simply don't know, but I would really appreciate it if someone who did have that perspective could could guide us.
Okay. Okay. Any other board members that were, do we want to open up to the public first? And see what we're.
We should open it to the public.
Okay. I need a motion.
We'll move it open to the public.
Second.
I'm sorry.
Bob? Bob made the motion. Has, check in all those in favor?
I.
I.
Hey. Any hands up? Got some comments? Anybody? Nobody? Going ones?
Lou, can they unmute themselves or I assume, because everyone's on mute if if someone's talking in in the public, you're all.
They can raise, they can raise their hand, though. If we use the reaction button on bottom, they could raise their hand. So if for some reason anyone's trying to speak or unmute and can't, just use that raised hand. There we go.
There we go. Oh, no, it's Walter.
No, exactly. At least he was showing us what we were talking about.
Everyone's allowed to unmute themselves in this.
There, okay.
Okay, all right.
All right. So there's no comments? Wow.
Can you guys, can you hear me?
Yes, Bonnie.
Yes.
Hey, so everyone, this is Bonnie Mahorn, three ten Tunnel Road. I'm not going to say I'm a farmer, but growing up in Colorado, I had five acres. So we had enough self fulfilled, whatever, we, that's what we farmed. But we probably had, I would say, thirty chickens, two goats, three horses, two pigs, and they all lived comfortably. However, here, I have more acres than I did growing up, and I would not use, like, my land for that. So I think it all depends on how your land is, if that helps out you and me, Mrs. Seabird. Okay, and obviously.
Yeah, what what would make you, why, like, I understand kind of what you're saying, but why, what are the things about it that would say, hey, I don't think this is the right spot for this?
Um, I have kind of wet land, like, it's very wet. So I purpose, I wouldn't, I don't think that it would be right to have animals in that, like, environment. However, some of my land, not all of my land is that way. So, um, and I do feel, so that's that part, but now I'm changing a little bit. I do feel a lot of people that have chickens or goats or pigs or whatever livestock don't want to speak out, just like the people that speak, don't want to speak out against it because they don't want their livestock taken away from them. So you have that problem. Um, obviously, I want to keep at least chickens. And another thing, just you guys, I don't know if everybody knows this. You don't have to have a rooster in order for your chickens to lay eggs. So I don't know if that's like goats. I don't know if you, you know, have to have a male goat in order for the goats to, you can milk them. I'm not sure all that, but there is, you know, that's a big thing with chickens is the roosters. I think roosters are annoying, but, you know, you don't have to have a rooster. Um, so, thank you.
Hi, thank you.
All right, anybody else? Nobody else?
Yeah, so Erin, yes, Erin has her hand up.
Yep.
Yeah. Sorry, this is, this is my wife's account. This is Travis Group, fourteen Wyckel. Uh, I was intentionally trying not to dominate the conversation, but um, I think there there were some some interesting questions raised. And and like Bonnie, um, I don't necessarily consider myself a a farmer more than someone that that's kind of has a hobby farm. But I did grow up on a dairy farm, so I can kind of speak to some of the points. I think most towns do have some type of ordinance uh that regulates roosters. And I agree with Bonnie. Uh, we don't have roosters. We intentionally don't have roosters because we are respectful of our. Uh, we don't have roosters. We intentionally don't have roosters because we are respectful of our, our neighbors. Roosters are, are much, much louder. The hens will typically only cluck after they've laid an egg or, or something like that, so they're, they're much quieter. Uh, my neighbor commented that she hears the wild birds more than she hears our chickens. So, um, I think that's, that's probably one point. I think it would be an important part of an ordinance to make sure that there's some level of control. I think we, I would caution too much regulation on the roosters, though, for those people that are farming and raising chicks, right? So we don't raise chicks. We, we have our chickens for our personal use for eggs, uh, but for those people that, that raise their own chickens, uh, maybe even then they would need a rooster, but then they would likely need more land to do that. I think Clinton Township does a really nice job breaking down the head count by acreage. And so they really do kind of spell out what a head count would equal, um, and whether that is a, a goat or a sheep or a chicken. They have a certain amount assigned per acreage, and those add up. So, once you hit that certain amount, then you have kind of exceeded your limit, and then you would be out of compliance with, with whatever ordinance is in place. And so I think they've done a nice job kind of spelling out, this is the amount of animals that you would want to have based on size and waste management. Um, and I think that's another part, Jennifer, if I were going to kind of weigh into, to try and address your question. Um, you know, we have a, we have a management system that we've set up kind of within our little homestead here. Um, you know, we, we have a little bit of a compost heap uh, that we use to feed our garden. Uh, we have rain barrels and all those kind of things that we've kind of set up so that we can control all of those types of things. I mean, we have a, a pool in our backyard, so I don't want to sit by my pool and smell chickens or goats. Um, and I would get someone saying that, but we are also very cautious about the amount of land that we have. We have almost four acres that backs up to Charles Town Preserve. So there's, there's no, no smell or anything like that. So I, I think these are all really important questions that you're asking, and I think they're, they're good ones. Um, but I, I think some of our neighboring towns do have some good, uh, ordinances in place and regulations that they've kind of adapted that would help to, to address some of the, some of the points that you're saying. So I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to stay as neutral as I can and gi- and give you the information so you guys can kind of decide as a, a board. Um, but I do have a, I do have an interest in it, uh, in particular because it wasn't my neighbors that complained as I shared earlier. Um, so I've been very mindful of that, but I can't say that everyone would be that mindful. Uh, so I think it's important that we maintain uh, that balance between a farming community, uh, but also one that's, that's consistent with, uh, with being neighborly to, to the folks that we live near.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Right. All right.
Hi Ken, this is Teresa Conover.
Hi Teresa.
Hi. Um, I just wanted to make a, like a general statement. While I would like to see us relax the restriction on chickens, um, I just hope you don't decide to have like a free-for-all, like whatever animals you want, you can have. I, I agree with Travis. I think that some of our neighboring town have some ordinances that we could model ours after, but, you know, there needs to be like guidelines, so to protect the welfare of the animals, the welfare of the public, and then the issue of nuisance to neighbors. So, I hope that we can kind of pull all those resources together to come up with a, a plan, not to just say, have whatever you want.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good, thanks. Hey, uh, one, hey Travis, how many, how many, um, chickens? You said you have four acres?
We have almost four acres, yes.
Okay, so what, what, what is, what is the typical head count?
That, so we, we actually ma- we don't free-range our chickens because there's fox and everything that kind of wander. So we, we actually regulated our, the size of our flock by the size of the coop that we built. So we have eight chickens. Um, so, so that, uh, our, our property could, could clearly handle more. It's kind of the same point that Bonnie made. It's, it's about responsible management of that. So we're, and we're also doing it for personal use. We're not looking to sell eggs or anything. So, uh, for our property, we have eight, but that's only because we just have a, a coop that would house that amount. And then we have a, we have a small pasture, uh, similar thing. We have four pygmy goats, um, so they're about the size of a medium dog.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. Well, let's, um, we didn't get any other comments. No, nobody else, I see. So I need a motion, a c- motion to close?
Motion to close to the public.
Oh, second that.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, um, all right, so we'll do a little digging. See what a couple of the surrounding towns have. I don't think.
Steve has a comment, I think.
No?
Hey, Ken, I, I just wanted, I, I wasn't going to say this, but I'm, I'm just somewhat confused here because we just sat here and, and I guess, I, I guess my, my, again, I, I don't care one or, one way or another because I have the land to do it either way, but we just spent an hour and a half talking about limiting, you know, we're, we're a farming community and that, you know, we don't want to reserve, you know, and hinge on their rights, but now we're going to invent, what if someone wants to, you know, do goats or do chickens? It's, it's, it's just because it's a different form of farming, and now we're looking to put all these things on, like, I don't know, I'm just having, I, I'm sitting here listening as I'm having a very hard time based on the last hour and a half that we had a discussion about cannabis and how we fringe on those rights and we can't do this. And, and, you know, whether someone wants to have chickens or it's a different type of farming, so why all of a sudden are we now okay with putting all these restrictions on that? And again, I don't care one way or another. I really, I don't care one way or another. I just, I don't know that, I, I don't know, that kind of, that just didn't sit well with me right now.
It is different in this, Steve. If there is a, if there is a farmer right now that is raising chickens in Bethlehem Township, he has the right to do that. He, he, he can do that. What we're talking about is, you know, as Travis said, it's personal consumption. And our, so we're not talking farmland, we're not talking farmers and their farmland, we're talking about personal use. So we're talking about somebody who might have a half acre of land, and they want to put a thousand chickens on a, on, on a half acre of land. And you happen to live right next door to them. And so that's what we're dealing with. We're not dealing with the farmer. The farmer right now, he can house chickens. That's part of farming. I mean, he can do that. We're not exempt, you know, that, so it is the same as what we're saying. It's the other thing, we're allowing farmers to do their, their thing, which they're currently not allowed to do. And so the farmers currently can raise chickens. They can. Now, do they? I don't think we have any chicken farms in town. But they have that option as, as well. This is just personal consumption. This is just, this is smaller. And, and, and so as, as, as Travis had just said to us, he's not looking to be a farm. So this isn't, this is personal, you know, this is now personal consumption. I understand what you're saying, but we have to limit it because we're talking about somebody who might have a half acre of property.
Right.
You know, and, and that's, that's the difference.
Yeah, but then, but then we said.
Uh, I'm sorry, there is a restriction already, and that's the issue.
Yeah.
There is a restriction already.
What is it now? It's five acres or six acres? You, you can't?
Five acres.
Yeah, so, yeah, I don't know, I just, it didn't sit right, because then we started saying that, oh, they can, you know, we want the tax, I don't know. Uh, Brad, you had said about the tax money, and then I think Jen said, well, that, because they want the tax money so they can do it privately if they want. I don't know, I just, the whole, I, I just didn't make any sense to me. I don't know.
This is where that's the shift of, um, you know, there's been a cultural shift where now there's more of an interest in, in residential families, you know, raising their own eggs and.
Right, right.
I, I know. So it's sort of responding to that.
Ken, can I pop in here?
Well, I think Steve, this, I'm sorry, thi- this one's easing restrictions where cannabis was imposing restrictions, I think. That's, that's.
Brad, I got it right here, the.
I don't know.
Steve, so if you were looking in the book, it'd be 102-5 under prohibited uses. And when you get down to see of these land use issues, it says the keeping or raising of swine, chickens, game birds, or other animals of any kind, except in connection with a permitted farm use. So, you could take this and you could weaponize the zoning officer if you were so inclined and prohibit somebody from having a goldfish in a bowl on their kitchen table. It's, it was that extreme, and it did come up in 2015. It was tabled, which is, okay, that was the decision at the time. But when we saw what was going on and when Travis took the time to bring this to our attention, we looked a little deeper to see, well, all right, what is the, the underlying issues here? We realized, well, there's a flaw in this particular ordinance where exactly that, it's too restrictive, and there are towns that have quarter acre head count, uh, six chickens. They dress the roosters. So in, in essence, we're trying to undo something that was too tight, and, and then also come up with the parameters so you don't have, uh, chickens in a, in a close-knit area and they're on somebody's front porch.
No, no, I, I get that. I understand. I, I understand what we're trying to do. I, I don't know, it just, the way that just transpired, it just, I don't know. It, because I thought, like I said, we just talked about not doing that, and, and we're doing it, and I don't know, it just didn't sit well with me. I, I'm agreeing with you that it needs to be adjusted, is my point, is I agree with what you just said, Art, it needs to be fixed, but I, I, I don't know. No.
So, just adding on, I mean, I think it's like anything else that we do as a planning board. I mean, we have got, you know, if somebody wants to build a building, we have maximum building heights that, you know, we're not saying don't build, just if you're going to go over a certain height, that's going to require some, you know, additional scrutiny or, or process that you need to go through. And, you know, talking about ordinances like this, it's really just a, a, a different flavor of the same thing. You know, we want to, we want to prevent people from exploiting the extremes of this. You know, Ken used the example before of a thousand chickens on a half an acre of property. I think most people would recognize that that's, that's the extreme, and that's what we would want, want to protect against. So, you know, whether it's creating some sort of, uh, you know, animal limit number or, you know, acreage limits, or we talk about, you know, maybe setback requirements that are required, because again, you know, you could have 10 acres, but maybe your neighbor is only 50 feet away from you. Um, so, you know, there's different variables that I think need to be considered, so that, creating a little bit of structure around this, I think is really smart. You know, but again, I think most people are, you know, a lot of people certainly feel, you know, the way it exists now, it's probably overly restricted. So it, it certainly makes sense to, to kind of open things up, but you still have to have some balance there.
Any other comments?
Yeah, basically, this is going to be for people that aren't farmland assess. Anybody that's farmland assess, you can't, you can't put restrictions on them. We have the right to farm in the, in the town.
Yep. Yep, exactly.
Ken, is there a mechanism for us to, um, accumulate these other, like Clinton Township's organism or, ordinance? Can Care, Care, Care do that for us, or who?
I can. I was actually going to say that if, um, Travis, it was Clinton Townships that you were referring previously?
Yeah.
Or the town of Clinton?
Yeah, my wife has done a lot of research on the neighboring towns. I can email you all of the, the research she's done that could be a good starting point. It's not, it's not just Clinton Township, but yeah.
Well, that, yeah, that's fine. I was actually picking that one because we have the exact same planner. So the same planner for Clinton Township is the, uh, Seth LaHem's planner. So he very well could have drafted that ordinance, um, and, you know, probably many others also. So, you know, if, if you wouldn't mind, Travis, if your wife could send those over, and then, uh, I could get Jim on board to see if he did the one over in Clinton Township and whatever else he's done as well.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, let's, uh, let's table, table the discussion now. Yes, I agree. I think it is five acres. It's five, I, I think it's 5.5 for farmland assessment. So.
Is the ordinance subcommittee going to have another session, or are we just going to do it generally for the, for the board?
Now, let's, I mean, again, let's, let's, let's get some, some of the examples down first, and then as soon as we get them, we'll see what the time, what the time is, and I could send a, send an email out.
Okay.
And try to set up some time if it ends up working.
All right, okay. Thank you.
All right, so let's table, table this for, for movement at our next meeting. Uh, we don't have anything else for tonight. It's a, the later night, so. With that, Mr. Mayor, any comments?
I have no comments.
Mr. Randolph, anything?
I'm good. It was a long night, thanks.
Mary, anything?
Thank you.
Okay, any board members have anything?
Yeah, is our next meeting going to be Zoom or are we going to get back to in-person?
Um, we are, we're going to work it out. Um, I'm hoping to do an in-person. But all that, that's, that's all, um, very new, so we'll, uh, we'll logistically work it all out. It's going to end up being both. It'll be both. Will be available, um, and in person, hopefully.
It's June 28th, it's June 28th?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Have you, have you addressed the security issue?
As far as, we have, we have.
I know you have an email.
Yeah, yep, yep. We have some concern of, um, of, some radicalized possible comments that were made, um, against, um, some of the planning board staff. And there is a concern for, for safety. So, the, the thought is, we can, we can bring in a state trooper for our meetings. We can come up with something else. I guess, um, the, you know, Walt wants to, to see about having, um, security. I, I just, I don't know from a budgetary standpoint, um, if that's going to fall on the town shoulders, or it's on ours. I know we did it for, for the, um, concrete meetings, and it was a substantial expense. And again, it's, I mean, safety is safety. I, I'm, I'm, uh,
Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah.
Um,
please.
Mr. Mayor?
Was the threat against a municipal employee?
That's correct.
Okay. A municipal employee or, or a planning board member? You said planning board members.
Not member. That was not, I didn't say member.
No, Ken did. I thought I heard Ken say that.
He meant to say.
I didn't say.
Yeah, I think he said staff.
Staff, all right, okay.
And, and was the threat directed against a, a matter that was in front of the planning board, or was it a general threat?
Uh, it was, I, I would consider it general.
For the series of, of hostile, um, harassment for 18 months.
Oh, jeez. Oh, God.
Has this been forwarded to, to law enforcement?
Yes.
Okay.
And legal.
I'm, I'm sorry, you're going to have to clarify. So the 28th meeting, you want in-person and Zoom?
It's going to be based.
It sounds to me, from what I'm understanding, I mean, we are able to go back. There is no restriction on us going back. There has not been a specific timetable as to when we have to. The DCA regs still remain in effect, but the prohibition against us being in-person without, with masks, six feet, all, all of that has been lifted. So, the towns are trying to figure out the easiest way to do the transition. And, you know, my, my concern, other than implementation, from a municipal standpoint, is what has already been done for pending applications? So, you know, here, we have our logistics and we have the other security concerns we've been discussing, but the one thing we don't have is, let's say, an applicant that has already noticed for a virtual meeting on June 28th. In those instances, what we're trying to do is save the applicant money. We certainly don't want them to re-notice. Um, so those are some things we have to kind of play around with, but at least for that issue, we're okay here, and once we work out the logistics, work out the security, the only thing Mary would have to do is, is republish at least 48 hours before as to what it is that we're going to do, in-person, hybrid, whatever the case may be.
Is it possible for us to meet in person and have the, um, threatened employee be virtual in that, so that the employee's safety is not an issue with the rest of the board?
And the, I mean, or, or again, the other thing is, um, again, I mean, Art, Art's, Art has a little experience in this, and he's at our meetings also. But again, we can, you know, I, I, I first one to be the last one to leave. I have no, have no problem, you know, walking everybody to the car. you know, walking everybody to cars and everything else. Um, I think most of, most of the board members that are on um, would, would, would uh, probably stay until, you know, at least all of, all of everybody is in their cars and leaving. So I think we can make it so that nobody is there alone. Um, you know, that, that, that two or three people can stay until, until the end. Um, you know, I don't want to put further burden on, you know, on any of the board members, but um, a, again, I mean, the state police today, they're not, are, are they doing anything, is, is there restraining orders or anything else which, which were issued? That, that you know of, Walt?
Straining orders, I think they don't do that sort of thing, do they? Uh, I'll tell you one thing, I've, I've been to three different, um, uh, I don't know what you'd call them, uh, sessions that were given by the Hunter County Prosecutor's Office by SWAT Lieutenant Burr, um, and about school shootings and violence in the workplace. And um, at every single one, he said, what's the first thing that everyone says when something bad happens? And the, and it's as you probably already know, I never thought that could happen here. And I've seen it on TV, we've all seen it on TV, we never thought it could happen here. Well, guess what, um, I don't feel any safer knowing you're around, Ken. I really don't, sorry. I don't get a warm and fuzzy, you know?
I'm not gonna, yeah. I get it, but not gonna crawl under a rock also, you know.
I'm not either, but I'm, I'm finding out that the general public doesn't give a, a, a dart about someone, especially if it's a, um, you know, a woman being harassed, because it's not them.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we care, we care and.
Well, I, I hope so, but I certainly do. And, and I have, I have done a lot of, of personal sacrifice to try to protect our staff.
Yeah.
And I'll continue to do that because I take it seriously and I know it can happen anywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so again, you know, I don't know, statutorily, Kara, can, can Mary stay home? Everything is now, so.
So the, the one piece of guidance that we've been given is that we cannot do a in person for some specific people and virtual for others. We can certainly have a situation where we're offering both. Um, and if, if the plan is to offer both and anyone that wants to log in via uh, the virtual mechanism, meaning board member, staff, um, and uh, you know, really anybody at that point, so we basically have two different options, um, then that is okay. We cannot require or restrict and say only board members and applicants and board, and board staff is in person, everybody else on the public has to be virtual, that, that's a no go. But what a lot of towns are trying to do is not only continue the flexibility, which has been very helpful, especially going into the summer months, where people want to be able to participate, you want to have forums, you want to be able to continue business, but people also want to go on vacation and people that continue to be concerned about being in public and municipalities that have found that the public has more of a tendency to participate by this virtual option, because they can do it from anywhere. So I, I think if that's going to be the case, um, I don't think that's a problem. Um, I, I, I think that it's been identified as something we need to deal with. I think that we need to discuss or, you know, whatever is going to take place next to find out how the 28th meeting can happen. Um, because if, you know, you want to provide for both, but we can't, you know, then that might not be possible. So I think we need a little bit more info. Um, but like I said, the, the actual notice of the meeting, since we do not have any applications on, just needs to be forty-eight hours ahead of time. We could certainly communicate with everyone and, and let them know exactly what's going to happen. Um, if it's, you know, one option or both, once you work everything out and then uh, you know, do the proper notice for the meeting itself.
I have a question.
Yeah, I'm.
Building isn't open to the public yet, so how would that work as far as opening it for a planning board meeting, since we're not technically open?
So the, the governing body is not open to
No.
public, okay.
Yeah.
Well, then that's, that, that's really the first step.
Ken?
Yeah, no.
Yeah, just wanted to briefly point out that at the request of the mayor and the township committee, that we are investigating a hybrid solution. I'm not convinced that we could implement that hybrid solution by the 28th of June. But going forward from that, it looks like there are some pieces of hardware out on the market today that have been used by other towns, in fact, one town that's using it is Clinton, apparently with some success, that we might be able to duplicate in order to uh, get back to, at the very least, uh, hybrid meetings and avoid the technical problems of having everybody uh, connected into Zoom while they're physically in the same room, which I'm not even sure is even possible. So we are looking at addressing the hybrids, the hybrid meeting situation with a technical solution going forward.
Well, and then, then we need to give you time to get that figured out. And the town's gotta open up the building to the public, so. So, so based on that, then at least this next meeting will be Zoom and hopefully that'll be the last. At that point, we can, you know, we can open up the people's buildings for the people. So that's.
July 12th would be your next meeting after that.
Okay, so hopefully by then, July 12th, we'll have a, we'll have a building to go to and then uh, and then we'll go there. All right, any other board members have anything? Nothing? All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
All that.
Hi.
Hi. Here, everybody.
Everybody, have a good night.
Night.
Good night.
Night.